... Make sure you turn off your cell phone, please. You want to speak to someone outside? We'll just drop the beat.
Are you a songwriter?
Yes, sir.
Two remarks about something. First one I like.
Two of the memory card runs out. It's actually running out of screen.
Let us stand in line here. Can we take a picture? Should I take a picture in the manager's place?
We'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, January 28th, 7:00 P.M. Our invocation tonight will be given by Johnny De La Cerca. Please bow in his head.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you today humbly, with an open heart and an open mind, asking you to give our elected officials and those delegated to lead our great city the strength and the wisdom to make the correct decisions, to do the right thing and make the right choices for the people of this great city. We ask that you bless everyone here in attendance so that regardless of what happens here tonight, everyone walks away knowing that we are but sands on the beach of your glorious life. In the name of your Lord, your Son, my Lord Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
We have established a forum. Councilman Miller, Councilman Morones, Councilman Castillo, Councilman Guerrero, and Councilman Rodriguez. Will everyone now please stand for the U.S. pledge of allegiance and touch the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor, the Constitution of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
At this time, do we have any citizen comments? Janice Johnson?
Mayor, council, good evening. First, I'd like to say that my career deals in facts, not emotions, and that is what I'm going to speak of tonight. The city is insolvent, fact. Insolvency will make it difficult, if not impossible, to qualify for credits. It will also affect the city's rating and the attraction of new businesses. This is a serious situation, a situation that may take years to correct. What are the facts surrounding the insolvency? Specifically, the excessive spending in professional and legal fees. Last year, the city was being accused of actions pertaining to malfeasance, transparency, integrity. The previous council, which three of you are from, directed the city manager to defend the city and him from these accusations. Defense is expensive. There were more billable attorney hours. There were new auditors that required more time. There were publicists, et cetera, et cetera. During the entire ordeal, the city manager made the council aware of the financial position and the shortfall in budgeting for this expense. However, the council still directed the city manager to proceed to prove to the citizens that there was no wrongdoings at a very heavy cost. The new council, now with two new members and a new mayor, were made aware of the situation at the council workshops. The new members cannot use the absence to the past as an excuse either, because that would be hypocritical, of course, as members of the council have tried to hold the city manager responsible for all the errors of the past city managers. Whether the council members wanted to ignore it or didn't understand it, ignorance is not a defense. You were each placed there by your supporters to speak for them and in the best interest of the city. Those are the facts. Now, the council is trying to ignore their accountability in this great mess. The council made many several mistakes during this time, whether it was attitude, agendas, egos, pride, all emotions. They directed the city manager to spend the citizens' money even when the city manager explained the situation. The council may ask the city manager to resign. He will not. He did his job to the best of his abilities and as directed by the council. You might want to terminate him. If you are successful, it will be a wrongful termination. Unfortunately, for the council and those who do not support the city manager, due to government rules and regulations, there is plenty of evidence in meeting notes and tape recordings that specifically support the city manager's position and specifically outlines the council's directions. The council will yet again make another mistake that will cost the citizens more money to defend their actions. Many have been blinded, excuse me, by emotions. It is time for the council to take responsibility and accountability. You want to blame someone? Look at yourselves in the mirror. Stand up and confess to your supporters how you were involved in this and how you directed, directed it, or chose to ignore it. Admit, admit you made a serious mistake. The city manager will not be used anymore to cover your actions. Those are the facts.
I just want to say that at the time that the whole city council here, the whole mayor, not once Mr. Jocelyn approached me to say, "We're going to spend this much money." But I know others, but I just want to clarify that I wasn't one of those councils. Thank you.
Now, these citizen comments, I noticed that a lot of you put on item F. You have the choice of speaking now and at that time also. So if you just let me know you want to speak now, then I'll continue with the list. Okay? Next is Ms. Faust.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Sedona Faust. I'm the former finance director of the City of Forestville from February 2007 to May 2010. During my time as finance director for the City of Forestville, it quickly became apparent to me how certain decisions would affect the financial future of the city. Decisions that were often political-based, not decisions of staff or even staff's recommendations, but decisions of individuals that set the very seeds for all of you said today, some of which are still there. I could stand here all night, giving example after example after example of the many, many times these decisions were wrongly made, but instead I'll use just one. I remember a time a former finance manager came into my office and gave me direction to give four individuals raises in excess of 30% of their current salary. Ironically, three of those individuals were relatives of present council members. Needless to say, I was too honest to do such a thing. And thanks to Danny Tejada and a few other council members, that never happened. Many times, suggestions were made to raise rates, water rates, increase permit fees, utility rates, property taxes, so additional revenue could be raised offset rising costs. When you don't increase revenues, again, your costs are increasing. A deficit will occur. What amazed me most is the direction by council to continue the political spending. Almost $400,000 of expenses, unbudgeted, may I add, spent on audit after audit, legal fee after legal fee, attempting to blame former staff for the financial deficit. The only money missing from the City of Forestville is the money that was wasted on this expense. Do you realize that money that has been spent on past city managers' salaries and benefits and potentially an additional payout of Mr. Jocelyn could exceed a total cost of $406,000? There have been many bad decisions made. Most of them, yes, before some of your time, but definitely before Andy Jocelyn's time. And let me add that those decisions were often made by elected officials, not staff. The very best thing that could happen to Andy Jocelyn tonight is you dismiss him so that he can experience what I've experienced. But unfortunately, that's not what Andy wants. He chooses to work in an unfavorable environment and total chaos. But you know what? I understand. He does it because he cares for the people, the wonderful, hard-working staff and personal friends of mine that keep the city functioning. I consider myself blessed that I had the opportunity to work with each of you. I leave you with one last thought. Every day that you don't spend building is lost opportunity. Build up your staff. Trust their decisions. They are the most valuable asset of the city. Build for your citizens, the people that appointed you to serve them. Allow a passionate city manager to build your city with educated decisions, not political ones. Thank you.
Paul Seck?
Hi, Mayor. My name's Dick Evans. I'm going to speak to the I F, I believe it is, and that's in the present, to 3.10 of your charter. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Good evening, City Manager. In 2004, the citizens of this city approved the Home Rule Charter. The purpose of this charter was to create a constitution, a guide for the citizens and the city authorities in the conduct of the city. Chapter, in section 4.01(c) of the charter, calls for an evaluation and performance review of the city manager once every quarter. I do not believe the city manager has had an evaluation this year. In these reviews, the council members can point out areas of agreement, disagreement, can point out the issues they want to address, can change or rectify. In those cases, the city manager has 90 days to attend to those issues and come back to the council at the next quarter of the review with answers. This process is in place to solve problems in a structured and fair manner to enable the city to grow without damaging the reputation of the city or its authorities. Needless to say, the CNA authored by Jim Miller on the agenda for this meeting damages at its face the city and its authorities. The firing called for in the CNA posted for this meeting is exactly what the charter hoped to avoid, airing charged, unvetted accusations that should be addressed only in the proper review process established by the charter. You may remember that the first meeting of this new sworn-in council, Councilor, added an action to a CNA event to cancel a CNA event, an event at the convention center. This by adding something to a CNA item. You're in violation of the Open Meetings Act and also it was voted on before any citizen's input. But here is the result. The result of this action is costing the city thousands of dollars in canceled contract claim expenses and it will cost him further thousands of dollars in legal expenses. If today's firing is successful, the CNA will cost this city an additional hundreds of thousands of dollars, especially with no due processing in sight. Thank you.
David Wong?
I'm a citizen, business owner. If any one of us in this room spent money the way it's been managed, we would have built workers following us around and be called another day. But I guess being since the city's spending that money and the city managers spend it, they haven't been around. And I don't think any one of us in this room could get away with operating like that. So, you know, it don't look like a good way of conducting business. I couldn't do it myself. I wouldn't get away with it. So, with a reputation like that, I don't know if you need to employ like that either. Thank you.
Jesse Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Council. I appreciate you, Matt. For me, what this ball is down to, obviously, I support Andy Jocelyn, not just as a friend, but as a leader, somebody that I've had the opportunity to follow for a long time. The issue as I see it is not about hiring or firing. The issue as I see it is about building this community, as Ms. Faust commented on, versus continuing to break things. In the words of Andy Jocelyn to most of the employees and citizens of this city at a speech that he gave not long ago, "What did you do today? I wonder if at times we don't overcomplicate things. So let's simplify things a little by rephrasing the question. Instead of asking, 'What did you do today?' Let's rather ask, 'Did you build something today or did you break something?'" Keep the question in mind when considering life at the City of Forestville. Did you build or did you break? Did you build someone up or did you break them down? Did you build your own reputation through your actions and words or did you break your reputation? Did you build the City of Forestville's image or did you break it? I'm sure that if we are all very honest, then we can all plead guilty to having broken down in one of these areas at one time or another. That's okay. Life, family, and work all take their toll. It's busy and difficult. Frustration sets in and we lose it. We're not perfect, but still we need to work at it. Let's take it one day at a time. Those moments when we break people's situations down will never go away entirely. And to expect that may be idealistic. We need to make a conscious effort to build each other and relationships up, honestly and sincerely. We need to really work at not breaking. If we can do that, then maybe the building moments will outshine the breaking moments. And that positive balance is definitely within our reach. So next time someone asks you, "What did you do today?", wouldn't it simply be nice to say, "I built"? Those words are an illustration of leadership of Andy Jocelyn. I'm not here to pick on anybody and I'm certainly not here to be negative. That's not what I'm about. You know where I work. And my guys know that that's not what I'm about. Everybody that knows me knows that I'm not about being negative. That's not my point here today. Okay? My point is that Andy Jocelyn, without question, means more to this city than the current general fund issue. A lot more. He has done more, created more, built more for this city than most of the rest of us combined. And that's a fact. It's easy to sit back, find a scapegoat, throw rocks and break things. In the words of President Eisenhower, "The search for a scapegoat is the easiest of all hunting expeditions." So what I'm asking of this council is, please, don't take the easy way of breaking more. Lead this city, its citizens, businesspersons, and visitors by taking the difficult road of building. Building with those who have a vision of leadership, who know how to build, and who want your input to get us where we need to be. Andy Jocelyn is a builder, and I ask that you, our council, be builders too. That's it.
I'd like to comment on that. I don't know why only Mr. Castillo's got a T-shirt today, but we all are here. And I'm here, I speak for myself. I'm here to build myself. The guy that's spent, it's already gone and we're ready to build on and work with everybody. I just want to thank everybody for coming out. Mr. Councilman Morones, I've got your T-shirt in my truck. I didn't have time to go get it. I don't know what the people tell you, but all we could have done is put one on each train, but it's no big deal. We're not here to pick at each other, but that makes it seem like we don't want to build. Like I said, the council before was, "I spent. This is, I built."
Right. And I agree.
Larry Smith?
What do you mean, Mayor, Council, Andy? Myself and all the folks you see here standing with me and bringing are all proud employees of the City of Forestville and the folks in support of Andy. We're here tonight to lend a voice to a man who strives continuously to put our city's goals within reach and make our city a wonderful place to live. In our jobs every day, we build things and we maintain what has already been built. But we see to Andy Jocelyn as a city manager who visits with us our regular places. These visits for Andy are to help us, are to help him obtain a better understanding of our daily operations, of the streets, the parks, the water, and the wastewater plant. Andy pushes hard to better understand what makes these operations tick so we can make informed decisions as to what steps we need to take to improve our city's improvements and infrastructure movement with our city's growth. Andy's got a great rule to make sure our budgetary needs are met. Having the materials we need is what makes our daily operations run smoothly. This allows all of us to provide the best possible service to our city. Andy has built morale because he makes each of us feel important. Andy has built morale because he makes each of us feel important. He shows up at our job sites, he values our input, he commends us for our job that's completed timely and properly. Andy has built character, and he has communicated his character with clear expressions of what he wants from us, and he takes extra time to make sure that we understand his visions. Andy Jocelyn values teamwork to build and move forward. Andy has put pride, has built pride because he helps us understand our values to this great city. He has proven time and time that when we do a good job as employees, we will be recognized even if it is a simple pat on the back with a smile or a thank you for a job well done. Andy has strived to build the best teamwork that a city could have. Why is this? Because he has encouraged us to be committed to doing a good job. He helps us to be committed with his leadership to build each other up, not tear each other down. Andy has not only taught us to maintain, he has taught us to build. My question to you this evening is simply, when we leave here tonight, will you build us up to get stronger or will you tear us down? Thank you for your opportunity to voice your concern.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, City Counsel, good evening, City Manager. That the city manager is responsible for the financial well-being of the city is fact. Just like any CEO of a company, if his board makes a bad decision, don't fire the board, they fire the CEO. My job here tonight is to remind you that you are his employer. Have you given him the training, the opportunity, and the support to be able to do that? And if you can't answer yes to every one of those questions, then you have no right to fire him. The only way that this can work, if you are dissatisfied with the city manager's performance, is to put a six-month notice on him and give him six months to turn the city around, not to get rid of the debt that's been incurred, but to have the city running on a day-to-day basis so that it's not addy to that debt. At the end of that six months, then you can come back, then you could rightfully fire him without recourse. But to hold a meeting like this with that due warning, I think is unfair.
I don't have a lot to say, but I think these other people, the people that you put, what's going on here. I'm not a politician, trying to stay calm, because I'm pissed off. I'm mad when this kind of stuff happens. What a good man, a good husband, a good... I'm pissed off. I'm pissed off. You got a good man, hard worker, and I hear, I live in Florisville here, and I hear from these people about how he treats them and how he tries to get them to do more, to be proud of what they do. I don't care if he's digging a hole, he wants them to be proud, be the best hole digger there is. And then when somebody wants to fire him, that just pisses me off. All right? It just pisses me off. A good man there, and you want to do this, you want to fire him? Go ahead, fire him. Then you're gonna have to pay him eighty percent of his pay for this five-year term, so you're gonna spend more money. I've got a couple of questions for you, Mr. Miller. Do you know what it is to have two homesteads?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
It's not on the agenda.
We gotta keep it down, okay?
Yes, sir. Hey, you're obviously not gonna answer the question. We're talking about a $400,000 shortfall on last year's budget. Lawsuits brought by you cost the city $370,000. How much money did it cost?
Well, I'd be more than glad to share with you the numbers.
Sure.
Andy, do you have a copy of those numbers that you sent me? All about you. The numbers that I shared with the Audit Committee?
I have the numbers memorized. The total is 359,000 for legal and professional fees. We cannot have legal without professional, they go together, because we have to hire professional people for those legal expenses.
Counselor, how many lawsuits were brought against the city by Jim Miller?
Oh, yeah.
Counselor?
Three.
No. Jim Miller has never brought... Correction, I took issue over the ballot. The mandamus was the only lawsuit where Jim Miller's name was on it.
You spearheaded all the others.
That is an incorrect statement.
It's fine, you can say whatever you want to say, but right here...
Now, this calling names stuff has to stop. We are adults, we're professional persons. If you're gonna call somebody names, that's not it. You step outside, take care of business, go to the party.
I'm not a politician, I give a thought, I can't talk. I pretty much said that, and like I say, you know, you can play all these games, you can say whatever you want to say, but God and all these people know, this man does not deserve to get fired.
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. I want to thank you for this opportunity to say a few words tonight, and I want to also tell you that I know you have a very difficult job as the new counsel, and that you inherited a lot of things that are not pleasant. But I've come here tonight to respectfully request that Item 4, F and G, be tabled for today, and I would also respectfully ask that it not be completed at this time and either tabled or taken off the board, but especially tabled for tonight. I know that there is much consideration and a lot of good words that have been said here tonight, and they're not true. And most of all, I just want to say that as far as Jim Miller, I want to thank you for what you have brought to this community. You were one like one crying in the wilderness for several years, and it seems that what you were talking about is true. I admire your leadership and I thank you for that. But I also think that we have to look at Florisville's tradition, and it seems to me like that Florisville has always been an after-the-fact governing body. It's only when something shows a lie that everybody thinks all is said about what's happening. What we should be is proactive, and I think that's what this new counsel is trying to bring to Florisville. And I applaud you for that, and I think that's good, very good. But I also know that things that have happened have not just happened overnight. And I know that things that have come about recently have had a lot of emotion played within them. There have been a lot of good facts mentioned here tonight, and that's how it ought to stay, withstand the facts. But the governance in Florisville has mostly been run by tradition. It's not been run by proactiveness, management plans, city plans, all this sort of thing. That's something that's been lacking, and that is something that this new counsel is bringing to the board, and that's very good. But in my opinion, and this is strictly my opinion, I think that as long as the city manager has professed that he would be willing to work with this new counsel, then I think that he should be allowed the opportunity to be a part of the solution and not just be blamed for the problems that exist, because that hasn't been able to be determined that just one person has been to blame for all that has happened. And it's not really prudent that we should go ahead with making that decision tonight. I think it needs a lot more study, and I would concur with Mr. Vipon that at least table it for six months, if not take it off the table altogether. I think that when you fill the baby up with the bathwater, it's not good. And I think that the city manager, unless he has expressed an opposition to working with you, should be given the opportunity to be a part of that solution.
Mr. Ring Hopkins?
Thank you, Mayor, City Counsel, Andy.
Mr. Cantor? I want to take my hat off to you. I agree with you, I have got a temper too. I'm with the Little League, I'm supporting them, I'm like him, I'm not a politician. I don't like politicians because they're crooked, they lie, and I can't trust them. Like I said, I'm here with the Little League, they know, I've been with them complaining, moaning, groaning about the fields, the concession stands. Andy's helped us as much as he's can. He's come out there on Saturdays, he's come out there on Sundays, I've showed him things. What can we do, what we can't. He's guided me, I appreciate him for that. I hear the expense of $400,000, like I said, I ain't no politician, but I keep hearing from this gentleman how the city's spending money and it's worthless. You know what I could do with $400,000? I could build seven baseball fields, I could build a football field in... I'm Jack Randy. Every year now, I've had kids that played at that park, at the River City Park. That's like thirty years ago. I have been here ten years, the only thing that's changed is they have moved the stairs and they have painted the concession stand in ten years. I've got this year and four more years that the Little League allows me, and then I'm going on with my kids to high school. But meanwhile, I want a complex, I would like to start a new complex, so when I do take my kids to high school, these other people are bringing their kids up, they've got something to start with, then they can take care of it. But I want to be one to get it going. The mayor, he tried it. You know, he did his best. We kind of got out of hands on things and started going to others. But that's a different story, the park, I guess, I'll get to y'all whenever y'all need that. But like I said, y'all need to think about who started all this. Mr. Miller says he didn't do the lawsuit, but I can tell you what, he was probably pushing the DA to file it. So I don't know. A backbone. Now, this is my point of view, you can take it, you can leave it, but each one of y'all vote on everything, and then it's passed. To me, it seems like Miller's the one that's running everything. I see two of y'all voting, everything that he's...
Let me comment on that. You were okay when the mayor was doing all that and had all his vote?
Yeah, I mean, at least he showed an interest to our little organization. We had that money.
He's part of, he's part of why we're in trouble.
Okay.
But we're not gonna admit that, are we?
All right, if he was, okay.
I'm just gonna admit that.
This is why I'm...
Let me tell you, sir, I told you, get a plan together to work with the kids, but you always want to blame that this counsel's not doing. I'm for the kids and I'm for the people, and I'll always be here for people. I don't care if they say, people tell me, if Mr. Miller runs, if Mr. Miller don't run me, if Mr. Guerrero don't run me, if Mr. Castillo don't...
The people run me. I ask, and I get support, what do you think of this, Tim? What do you think of this?
And I've got my support, and I've got my what I ask, but when it comes down and we start pointing fingers at everybody, then I don't know, because I tried, I told you to go out there to work with Mr. Pettis. If I had to go out there myself, but I tell you what, what do you think we'd be today if we would have gotten that five million dollar complex? And I didn't have, I didn't have, I didn't have a problem getting on the building that thing. I had a problem because they didn't want the people to vote on it. That's where I had the problem. I had to go out there with all these citizens, picking up a petition, oh, it was so hard to put it on the ballot, and then the kids would have had it, but we knew the trouble we were getting in, and that's why this complex was never built. But I'll tell you what, I'll do anything for you to try to get, to fix those old fields.
Sir, you've told me this and told me this... I have never seen, I have never seen you at the park when we're having... I've seen some of the other people out there.
The first time I saw you was when you came to that workshop. That's the first time I saw you. And I don't want to be mean about it, but it gets to me too when you say that I'm not for the kids. I'm for the kids and I'm here for the people, I'm here to serve.
Well, if you, but listen, I'm saying, this is my opinion, so, you know, I'm saying my opinion...
And I respect your opinion, I respect your opinion.
And if it's stepping on your toes, I guess it's a good problem.
It's not stepping on my toes, because I know that I'm here for the people, and the people have supported it, showed that support.
Okay, that's fine. Well, I'm telling you my opinion, that's what I see. Like I said, I'm not no politician, but each one of y'all's got a backbone, and y'all should not allow, you should not allow one man to... I can tell you right now, y'all already got a shit out, already voted, and everything has...
No, there's definitely a vote here.
Oh, now you're right to that son of a dick. But anyway, David, I mean, if you need anything, I'm here, Little League's here, the law case is here, we appreciate it, and I hope you stay around for a little bit longer.
Now, Mayor, I found the numbers that are reported to the Audit Committee that relate to attorney fees and accounting fees paid in the last fiscal year. It totals $332,725.46. It breaks out as follows. To the accounting firm of Holtman Wagner, our auditors, last year we spent $75,885.67. We learned from that audit that we had some fund structure problems, we had some accounting software problems, we were misapproached, or moving money from one fund to another fund that should not have been done. This was recorded by our control. A lot of recommendations, good recommendations, came about it, that audit. There was never an accusation of anybody stealing money. Of that $332,000, $1,267.50 was paid to the law firm of Kaufman Killian, Inc. They represent the 4A Corporation. To our former auditor, P. Malcolm Gully, who assisted the new auditor, Pat Wagner, a total of $6,935.25 was paid. To our city attorney, excuse me, here, I gotta grab the right page, a little over $200,000 was paid. And that breaks down, excuse me, I lost a piece of paper here.
Mr. Miller, if you can, we use a discussion of the Audit Committee...
That would be fine, that would be fair.
Go on, for the board of business, consideration and action to three minutes from December the 13th, coming through, we all have the minutes.
I'd like to make an amendment to those minutes. That was December the 13th, right, for our meeting? I would like to amend those minutes, it states that I was told to leave the executive session, as directed by our city attorney, Lou Rosenberg. So I was not there for the executive session nor for the closing. And that's not reflected in the minutes.
Excuse me, ma'am. Are you allowed to ask why? Ms. Castillo was asked to leave?
I was not... I was not, well, I was not given a reason.
Mr. Rosenberg? I don't, I don't believe it was like, like that, was it?
Well, the question was asked of Mr. Rosenberg if, if they could ask me to leave the room, and he said, "If you wish." So the direction came from Mr. Rosenberg.
He got the correct word, "if you wish," and she wished to leave.
And these aren't the minutes of that executive session that we are reviewing here. These minutes could be amended to say that you were not present after we resumed from executive session would be an accurate statement, but to get involved with what occurs in executive session is privileged information.
Madam Mayor, the discussion we detected in session does not belong in this forum.
Can I have a motion to accept an amendment?
Madam Mayor, I have a couple amendments to this or corrections. In the second line, it states that Mayor Diana Garza presided over the following council man, Mario Morones, Jim, John Guerrero, Marina Gomez, and Councilwoman Sherri Castillo. That should read council members or council men. Also, in item three, new business, item 3B, there is no discussion or no comment as to the questions that were asked of Mr. Dickey by myself regarding explanation or the fact that he said he would give you the additional information that I was asking. I would request that the meeting minutes reflect that.